I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Yerko.
Present.
Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone that our Spring Shine Day, which is the Sterling Heights Initiative for Neighborhood Excellence, will be held on Saturday, May 1st. Our volunteers will meet at 9:30 a.m. at First Church on Dequinder and will be assigned to clean up residential properties that need assistance. So for those of you who don't know about the Shine Program, this was created a number of years ago for a number of reasons. First, to ensure that our neighborhoods are clean and orderly and that we're doing all that we can to protect property values, and also to help those in need. There are a number of residents that may have financial hardships or some sort of mobility limitation, that they're just not able to maintain their exterior of their homes in the manner they once were able to. So some of the work involves mowing grass, trimming bushes, raking leaves, in some cases, painting sheds, and so on. And we really could use your help. We have a core of volunteers, anywhere from 50 to 75 individuals, but we can always use more. And on the Shine Day, we go out and clean up anywhere from 30 to 40 homes. It just depends. And we do this twice a year. So if you're interested in volunteering, please call our Community Relations Department at 446-CITY, and we'd be happy to add you to the list. It's very gratifying. It only takes a few hours of your Saturday, and then you're free to go home and work on your own properties. But we look forward to seeing you and hope you'll volunteer. And speaking of spring, we're very pleased to say that, again, after, this will be our 30th year now, that we're offering a curbside collection of yard waste. That will begin on Monday, April 5th, so you can start setting your yard waste out then. You can use 30-gallon cans, or if you use 64- or 96-gallon carts, they must be carts on wheels so that they're easier to maneuver. Of course, as an alternative, you can also use yard waste bags that are available at basically any grocery stores, and Meyer, and hardware stores, and so on. If you do use cans or carts, you do have to have a sticker on them, and you can get stickers at City Hall or our DPW building. So again, yard waste collection starts on Monday, April 5th. And again, continuing on the theme of spring that we've all been waiting for, Green Macomb and the Blue Water Conservation District have announced the return of their annual Tree and Plant Sale. It's an opportunity for the public to purchase young trees, fruit trees, flowering shrubs, wildflower seed, and other fruits and vegetables at very reasonable prices. The sale is now open, and it'll run through Friday, April 2nd. So those of you who are interested, simply go to green.macomb.gov.org, and you can browse the stock and place your orders. The location to pick up in this area, thankfully, once again, is Sterling Heights Dodge Park in the Farmers Market Pavilion, and that pickup day is April 30th and May 1st. And you might be able to, although the stock will be limited, actually purchase onsite as well if you're not able to order online, but it's best to order online. Since the sale began five years ago, more than 80,000 trees and plants have been purchased by residents and businesses. So it's a great program. The pricing is incredibly affordable, and certainly fits within the city's sustainability plan, for sure. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the number of events we have going on to honor Women's History Month, which also includes a resolution that's on the city council agenda this evening for approval. And Sterling Heights has been blessed with a number of female leaders who have contributed to the city's success over the years. Some examples include the fact that approximately half of the city's current directors and managers are women. A clear majority of the city council are women, and they never let the men on the city council, nor me or the city attorney, forget their influence. So that's pretty neat. So four out of seven of our city council members are females. Also, the first female mayor of Sterling Heights was Jean Gush, who served from 1986 to 1991, and I hope she's watching tonight for this special shout-out. Also, Mary Zander was the city's first female city clerk, serving from 1976 to 1997, and also held the position of Director for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. We've been really blessed with fantastic clerks over the years, including our current city clerk, Melanie Ryska. The first female firefighter in Sterling Heights was Bonnie Demir, who rose through the ranks and retired as a battalion chief a few years ago. Women have had an indelible impact on this great city, and we will continue to honor and recognize their contribution through the remainder of the month, including our social media outlets. In addition, the City of Sterling Heights Public Library continues to celebrate this important month with a series of events. I wanted to call to your attention, on Monday, March 29th, at 6:00 p.m., the Sterling Heights Public Library will launch a virtual program on Harriet Quimby, America's first female pilot and a Michigan native. This unique pioneer sparked the interest of women across the globe. Thanks in part to Harriet Quimby, there are now over 50,000 female pilots across the country. And those interested in participating should visit the Sterling Heights Library website to register for this program. And I just wanted to show you a screenshot, just to draw your attention to the program. I think this is really neat, especially for those who are interested in aviation. So this is Ms. Quimby, years ago when flight became, really just took off, no pun intended. But again, this is on the 29th at 6:00 p.m. You can go to our library's website to register for this. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the Consent Agenda? Not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Support.
They're moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a consideration item. This is to consider nominations to the City of Sterling Heights Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? See none, council? This is a zoning board of appeals alternate position, and we have one opening to a partial term ending June 30, 2023, and this is a council appointment. Is there anyone who has a nomination to the alternate on the ZBA?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Give me one second. I would, trying to find it. Resolved to nominate Stephanie Jackson for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the April 6, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've spoken to Stephanie in the past, and she had explained that she was previously on the East Point Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think she'll be a great addition to our Zoning Board of Appeals, even as an alternate.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another agenda item for considerations to boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have two appointments. These are both city council appointments, first to the Arts Commission and then to the Sustainability Commission. We'll take the Arts Commission first. This is a partial term ending June 30th of this year. Is there anyone in council who'd like to make an appointment? Not, pass on that. Next is the Sustainability Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make a appointment to the Sustainability Commission?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arco.
Moved to appoint Karen Melchinsky to the Sustainability Commission to a term ending 6/30/2022.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Counsel, any further discussion on this item? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. I'll move on to communications.
We didn't do the first.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Radke. So we did not make an appointment to the Arts Commission, so I would entertain a motion to postpone that item to the first meeting in April.
Some moved.
Support.
They're moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion now. Move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak under communications from citizens? Mr. Jefferson.
I'd like to nominate Randy Wright Smith for that Arts Commission. Looks like she does a pretty good job on the artworks. Mr. Vanderpool, I have a question for you. A lot of people out there asking. Did you get any hint, or have there been suggestions on how much money we're going to get from the federal government, from the bailout, and what are we going to do with the funding for the, with the money that we get from the bailout? Is there any suggestions towards you, or do you know what, how much we're going to get for that? And, again, a lot of people talking a lot of stuff out there on the internet and things like that, but they fail to show up. So folks, I don't know what to do for you. Oh, and Mr. Vanderpool, I also want to ask you about, there's a lot of people chirping about the sidewalk repairs. Can you explain how to get billed for that, for the sidewalk repairs? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jefferson. Is there anyone in the audience on communications from citizens? If not, close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Mayor, just a quick response to a couple of those questions. The American Recovery Plan provides assistance to communities that are projecting significant revenue losses and so on. In the case of Sterling Heights, over a few-year period of time, our revenue loss was projected to be close to $18 million. The ARP program will fund, over a couple-year period of time, just over $20 million, $20.2 million for Sterling Heights. It's based on a need-based formula, somewhat determined by community development block grant formula, and also unemployment and low to moderate income, and so on. Now, in those areas, we ranked quite favorably, good, that is, so our share is lower than, much lower than what other communities our size are getting in Michigan, and even some smaller communities. You know, just by way of example, the city of Westland is approximately 80,000 in population, and they're receiving 26 million. So again, it's based on need. With respect to our sidewalk repair program, if anyone has questions about it or would like to be added to the program, we'll certainly inspect your sidewalk. We're happy to do that. Feel free to call 446-CITY, email myself, or our council members, and we'll be happy to get back to you. Or you can simply call our Engineering Department directly and get the inspection scheduled. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kachubski?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Okay. Counsel, open it up. Reports, new business? Mrs. Sarowski.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, tomorrow is one of my favorite days of the year, St. Patrick's Day. As a quarter-Irish person, I feel like I'm all Irish that day, so I just want to send my greetings to the residents, for those of you that are Irish or Irish just on tomorrow. I just want to send you the little Irish blessing that, you know, I love, and it's just fun. And so may the road rise up to meet you, may the winds be always at your back, may the sun shine warm upon your face, the rains fall soft upon your fields, and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand. So have a great and safe day tomorrow, and thank you.
All right. Very well put. Thank you, Ms. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Jefferson brought up a good point about the sidewalk assessments, and having talked with several residents in the last week about sidewalk assessments, I think the city needs to move to a better funding model on sidewalk assessments. Right now, when we repair your sidewalk, the city bills homeowners, sometimes the tunes of thousands of dollars, especially if you live on a corner or have two sidewalks in front of your house. I think a better funding model would be something like we do for city streets. We would charge a tax, it would be a tax, of $5 or $10 a year per home, and essentially use that money to pool together and then repair your sidewalks, not having to assess you. Just like insurance, you pay a little bit now so you don't get socked later. I met with a woman today who said that she was over $1,200 for her sidewalk assessment. You know, and we fix sidewalks right now, and I think it's a 23-year situation. If you think about 23 years times $10, and what it would equal, $230, versus in 23 years, we charge you for $1,200 for the sidewalk in front of your house, I think this funding model is both easier and it'll take the burden off, especially for people on a fixed income. It hurts a little bit upfront to pass it, but in the long run, it would benefit the entire city. I've pushed for this before. I think we should really discuss it. I think it's something that we should consider doing, just because I feel for people, especially people on a fixed income, who call me and say, "I'm paying $1,200 for sidewalk repairs this year." And especially because it's a public thoroughfare, if people use their sidewalk, it's for the whole community, not just for the people who own the house. So I would hope that we could really consider this in the future, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. As long as we're on the subject of sidewalks, first of all, can, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, can a homeowner actually go and find their own contractor to repair their sidewalks once we tell them it needs to be repaired? And the other question I have is, how do we rotate the sections of the city to determine when those sidewalks are going to be up for repair? Do we do like, you know, square mile? How do we determine, you know, in the summer when we do the inspections?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, those are good questions. First, residents do have the option to repair the sidewalk on their own. Some do choose to do that. Although our pricing is very favorable, it's a very good unit pricing, and most elect to have the contractor do it, which comes with a warranty, and also you have the ability to finance the cost over a period of five years at a very favorable interest rate, which will be very low this year. We'll be bringing that forward to city council in short order. So the financing option is also a good option for residents to consider. And I forgot the second part of your question. Oh, what areas we determine. So basically, we have a running list of areas that have been completed in the community, and we rotate around the useful life, as Councilman Radke said, on a sidewalk could be 20-plus years. So we're always, we try to pick manageable construction areas, you know, that we know we can get done in one construction season. We focused heavily the last year, well, not the last year, the pre-COVID year, in this immediate vicinity, from Utica Road down to really Metro Parkway and between Dodge Park and Utica. So we've had a heavy concentration there, but that's because those sidewalks were very old. So we just have this rotation schedule that we move across the city, and then after about 20 years or so, we repeat it, and that's typically how it goes.
Thank you. Nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Arco. Anyone else? Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As long as I can remember, we have always, council has always addressed the sidewalk gap issue that we've been confronted with. And Mr. Radke has made a couple points that has made me kind of think, and maybe I should direct this to Mr. Kay. As far as funding is concerned, we contract to have sidewalks put in. Sometimes the bid comes in less than what we have budgeted for. That excess money, is it possible that we could set that aside in a separate account? And when we run across areas like maybe two, three properties that are quite wide, that would be extremely expensive for the homeowner, if we could use that money to put that sidewalk in and maybe split the cost with them? I'm not saying give them a totally new sidewalk, but maybe split the cost with them, or pay a certain portion of that cost, and then let them make payments over a period of time? Is that something that we would be capable of doing, rather than putting out a tax?
Mr., it's directed to you, Mr. Kachubski. Do you want it?
Well, I would think I'd give it to the city manager to start, because we may already do some of that as it is, but I'll let the city manager.
Mr. Vanderpool.
I was kind of looking at whether that's legal to take money from this account and put it over here in this account.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kosky, by no means my attorney, but I'll let Mark respond to that technical question. But what I can say is that we have reviewed a number of options. First, Councilman Radke makes a good point, you know, if we could ever shift that to a tax levy, it might be more equitable. The problem is then everyone's paying for a sidewalk every year through taxes, and no one likes to pay increased taxes, for sure. So, you know, it becomes a little bit more of a policy issue for the city council. But some other alternatives we're considering, that might be of interest to city council, is capping the amount of the assessment. So kind of a hybrid of what some of you are suggesting. So capping it so that no, an assessment, you know, we've had years where if you're a corner property, some individuals have had assessments as high as $7,000. You know, that is exorbitant, and I think those residents, you know, are rightfully so very upset, and even if you finance that, it's difficult. So if we capped assessments to something that doesn't exceed, you know, you could pick a number, you know, 3,500, or, you know, half that amount, or, you know, that eases the burden some. And what we'd have to do then is figure out an alternative funding method to make that up. I mean, the sidewalk program is expensive. It's about $1 million a year, you know, so whatever we do to change it means that we have to subsidize it from some other revenue source, whether it be general fund revenues, you know, we cut expenditures elsewhere, fund balance, property taxes, or the like. Now, under this plan we're proposing, we believe we can fund that within existing revenue sources. So we'll be outlining that to city council in the proposed budget, so you're well aware of some of these changes. You may want to tweak them some, you know, these are just some recommendations we'll be making, but I think it will help ease the pain to the residents that have some of the higher bills. The average bill is under $1,000. And again, if it is financed, you know, it does make it far more manageable. What you're also going to be seeing this year is, we're going to be recommending a much lower interest rate to make that financing far more attractive for residents. As you know, in the past, it's been up around 5%, 6%. And in this economic environment, that just doesn't make sense right now. So can we use some of the money? And in answer to your question, the short answer, I believe, can we use some of the unspent money to offset, as a funding mechanism, for some of the ideas I just mentioned? I would say yes, but the city attorney should confirm that.
Mr. Kachubski, anything to add?
Well, I would echo what the city manager stated. One thing to be careful of, and this is why the programs that the city manager outlined made a lot of sense, is because you're treating everybody the same. If you start picking and choosing who gets a break based on just somebody who comes in and says they want a break, that doesn't necessarily fly, whereas what the city manager is talking about would, where you would treat everybody equally and come up with an equitable system across the board.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Yanis.
So going along those lines, when we redo
So going along those lines, when we redo Mound Road, and we have 10-foot-wide sidewalks, are the property owners responsible for replacing that 10-foot-wide sidewalk?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Mr.
Okay. These questions are getting harder and harder. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yanez, I think you raised this with me a month or two ago.
That was about, that was about snow removal.
Oh, okay. All right.
Not about replacement of the wall.
Okay.
And I still haven't gotten the answer on the snow removal, by the way, through the chair.
I, I thought I did answer that. In those cases, the homeowners are not responsible for it. I sent out some information in your material last week that highlighted the sidewalk snow removal program. You know, while, while we try to make things as equitable as possible, the reality is, 99% of the time, our, our policies are applicable to everyone. They're fair and equitable, but there are extenuating circumstances that have to be accommodated. For example, I'm still on snow removal now. If, if you're, if you're looking at Dodge Park Road, the, the 10-foot sidewalk that was installed down Dodge Park Road is in front of homeowners, right? You know, they, they should not be responsible for clearing that 10-foot section of sidewalk, right? So there are anomalies in situations like that. And, and the same would be the case for Mound Road. But I don't have a definitive answer for you on Mound Road. I did pose that question with the city engineer. I, I am quite certain on a major roadway like that, with a major sidewalk that is beyond, you know, your typical neighborhood sidewalk, that that would be the city's responsibility. It's a, by the way, a county roadway and right-of-way. So there's another complexity there in terms of, you know, what level of responsibility does the county have as well. So I, I do beg for a little more time and a little more research on Mound Road. We still have to figure that out. But I feel very confident saying the property owners in those cases would not be responsible for that 10-foot sidewalk, no more so than the residents on Dodge Park Road would be responsible for that 10-foot sidewalk. Hope that helps.
I hate to drag out the City Council meeting, but this begs, this begs the question then, because we just heard the word equitable. If somebody has a 4-foot sidewalk in front of their house, and they have to pay for it, shouldn't the homeowner with the 10-foot sidewalk have to pay for at least part of it? That would be equitable?
Well.
You don't, you don't have to answer that now. But I mean, this, this does beg a discussion, though, right?
What I've made.
If we have some level of equability, equitability, and somebody has a sidewalk that's two and a half times the normal sidewalk, their neighbor has a 4-foot sidewalk around the corner, they have to pay. But now you got a 10-foot sidewalk, do they get, do they get a complete break, or do they get a partial break? And I think those are questions that really need to be answered.
They're very good questions, and, and I think it does require a more thorough update for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to change gears here. I just want to let everybody know that today, we did a little ceremony before our meeting regarding recede blood drives. They are going to regularly be holding them here at the community center, and I encourage all of our residents to donate blood as often as you possibly can. I donated this afternoon at 2:30. I was back in my car before 3:15. It doesn't take a long time. They're super friendly. The blood that they collect, and the blood products that they collect, stay here in the metro Detroit area. They supply Henry Ford Hospital, Beaumont Hospital, all the, the local hospitals. So it is a fantastic organization. I've worked with them at the Career Prep Center where I work. They do blood drives for us there. And at this time, with COVID and everything else going on, the blood volumes are really down, so they are in desperate need of donor, donors. So just look on, I believe, the city, we may have it through the Parks and Recs website. If not, you can call City Hall and get more information. But we are regularly going to be having them here in the community center. So I encourage all of you to, if you can, if possible, come and donate. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. And I would just say to everyone, echo the sentiments of Mrs. Serozki. Have a very happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, and that is all I've got. So with that, counsel, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Been moved. Removed.
Been moved and supported. I support it. No, any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.